All right, so it's time, let's call the meeting order please. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And we want to welcome and thank Haiti who's pinch hitting for Chris tonight. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. So, um, oh, we did, actually on the gen- okay. So, the, our agenda shows that we had a six o'clock meeting to finalize the budget, which we did, but now we're in our select board meeting. And so, our regular meeting, we make it our pledge. We want to review our agenda and make any changes as needed.
So, I would suggest that the first item on the agenda would be to finalize the budget.
Yeah. And our numbers are gonna change a little bit from what we knew at 6:30 when we thought we were done, since we have the new numbers for the fire department. And Doug's still putting those together, so we can move on and then come back to that. How's that sound? Yeah, any other amendments or changes to the agenda? Would anybody like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
Can we have to second his motion?
Yes, we should second his motion and then put that on the agendas, but we could do that all as accepting. You guys do it however you want to do it.
Accept the agenda as amended.
Yes, there we go. There's one motion to accept this agenda.
Seconded.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, let's, well, we don't, we can get rid of this one, I think, pretty quick, because we don't have anybody here to report from the planning commission. So, that was on our agenda, we'll have to catch up with them next round.
Yep.
So, that brings us to our road things, and let's go there, because that way, we don't have to take too much of Charlie's time, for some things, with the road came to him. One thing that we all were just working on with Charlie, was we wanted to just make clear, that everybody's clear on what the expectations are of the road crew recalling callouts. And Paul and Charlie had met this morning, and so I just put in writing what they talked about, and Charlie agrees this is what they talked about, so he signed it, and Paul was gonna sign it, and then we just have a clear understanding. So, unless anybody thought that there was something not right about this, or that they needed to, or wanted to add to it.
Well, I think you should read it into the record for the people watching.
That's right.
Oh, I'd be happy to do that. So, just, so our expectations of the town road crew regarding callouts, so these are the callouts beyond hours when, you know, things happen. So, they, the expectation is to punch the time clock in and out if the callout involves going to the town garage. Also, to make notes of who called to report the problem, because sometimes, no, Charlie, who usually calls? Sometimes it's the state police, sometimes it's an individual, right? So, we wanna know who called to report the problem, where the problem is, what is the nature of the problem? You know, is it a tree down? Is it, you know, what is, is? What did they do to fix the problem, and what further action will be needed to follow up? And, so, for every callout, we would like that information, and then, if the road crew responds directly from their home, and they, and they're up on the, you know, our road crew, many of them live up on the, in the Four Corners area, if they respond directly from their home, and they don't need to come to the town garage to get the equipment, they're still supposed to write down all that same information, and record it the next morning, or the next time they report to work. So, obviously, if it's a Saturday morning, they don't need to come down and do it, they can record it on 101. But, just so that we have a record of those things.
Let me sign that now.
Sure.
The time that they gotta call out, when they go out, they gotta report, and then when they-
When they come back.
When they come back in, punch your time clock again.
Right. And Charlie, absolutely, you don't punch the time clock till after you've written down these things. Okay? You're on the clock when you're writing those things down, that is work.
I got called on a four-hour long on some problem the other day. I just, I just go, "Punch in and throw four hours."
Yeah. So, so, well, now we just, we just make sure that we have a clear understanding, it's cool. So, I don't need all these copies. Oh, good, I'll give them to you.
Sure.
So, what else did we have on our roads? I know Brad and I were working on the ordinance, but that's a little bit later. Did you have other things to report on roads, and what's happening around town?
Not a whole lot, just been these little half-inch, one-inch snowstorms that are draining us. So, you know, soon as it happens, they gotta go out, because then we don't, phone calls start coming in. You know, so, we really haven't had a big storm to speak of, so.
Yeah. And the ice. Well, the other day, I stopped in, and Charlie asked me what it was like at Four Corners. I said, "I don't know, I'm heading that way now." I got there, it was fine down here, but it, from Byron's on, it was a whiteout. I couldn't see three feet in front of my car, so I called him and thought that, you know, Paris Hills is gonna be bad, but then 10 minutes later, I looked out and the sun was shining. So, I called him back and said, "I don't think it's gonna be a problem." Yeah, that's-
That's what I mean, it's-
Yeah.
It just changes, you know, so, we just, some spots are bad, we get pig, you know, take care of them, and about it.
Did we ever get our trucks calibrated yet for salt, unsalt?
Well, while we're running the mix of sand and salt, because it's not a consistent mix, we really can't calibrate it accurately.
Well, we pour out just the salt.
We're not doing straight salt. I'd love to be here to calibrate it, but if we're not running straight salt, we can't. And we, we can get it restricted, but we really can't, unless you have a very specific mix, like fertilizer, we can't get it perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for looking into it.
If we're gonna go to straight salt, though, then we can-
Calibrate it.
Calibrate it for that.
Because you can't just pour that on both ways.
Yeah.
Then follow it off.
When are we going to have that conversation?
Well, yeah, we, is that a conversation that people want to have, about whether we should be doing salt?
I, I disagree on straight salt, because it ends up in our brooks.
Yeah, and there's too much salt going in our brooks.
Well, our sand's going into brooks, too.
Well, the sand is too, but-
And personally, I could be wrong, but I feel if we were running a treated salt, we would put the same amount of salt on for the blacktop that we are now with mixing it with sand, and just run a straight salt.
Right.
Is that accurate? If we're running Clearlane, we could, you run, I wanna say it, seven pounds of Clearlane is, is basically 10 pounds of untreated salt. And it has a much colder working temperature.
I think that's what Pollitt uses, ain't it?
I, no, Pollitt treats their own salt, because they, that guy that came in here to try and sell us, he sells to Pollitt, and they treat their own.
Because he said that, that little truck there, they can put down 250 pounds onto a mile for that small truck. They've gotta, yes, they gotta calibrate it, they can calibrate it right inside the cab. So, they got a pretty good setup on that.
Now, I think you can do it whether you treat your own, or whether you buy it, but it's, just as long as it's straight salt, you can calibrate it.
Yeah, I see Timothy, they got theirs calibrated too, because they put up a pretty thin hole right down the middle of the road.
Timothy seems to come in little piles, has he noticed that?
Yeah, because that, because his thing plugs up on him.
Oh, okay.
And so, he has to stop, because they followed him, and he's got his sand right out the, around the side, so it gets, go right down the middle.
Yeah.
Well, I saw a state truck the other day, I think it was on a Sunday, when it was just starting to turn possibility of ice, and they were coming down Route 7 through South Wallingford. And I tell you what, I don't know if that calibration was opened up, because that was-
They were dumping it right on there.
And that, that spinner was just going like this, and I'm like, "It's not throwing" it, and it was just pouring. I mean, literally, I'd say, five-gallon bucket every few seconds is coming out of there. And I'm like, "Whoa," I didn't know where they're calibrating. That's what I asked Charlie the other day, I says, "Find out from them guys what their calibration is," because they were, I don't know how far the tandem went, but they were, they was dumping it on. I know a lot of state trucks are calibrated right from the office. They, they calibrate it on the road conditions, and the, and the weather.
Yeah.
But if we can get away without going straight salt, I, I don't know. I, I think someday the salt thing's gonna be-
Well, I also think that the sand, get, mixing in the sand is messing our brine up. To where, you know, I can see both sides, to where, if you've got the sand on, you're gonna get some grip, but on the other hand, I think the sand is restricting the brine, so it's not gonna clear the blacktop as good.
That's why we, you know, we mix it up, but then the solution to that is everybody buy one tires, you don't have to worry about it.
I do wish-
But it seems like we have way too much sand on the blacktop roads, especially here in the village. So, I think if the first pass was salt, then the stuff would be melting.
Yeah, but it don't melt that fast, and then when you come back down through, you end up pushing it off the side. Get the slimmer, you can't steer it.
Well, I didn't like that brine, because that was very slimy, but it's really difficult.
Yeah.
Like, today, coming down this hill, there was such a cloud of dust, that I couldn't see the cars coming up the hill.
Yeah, but when you're coming down through, and it's slippery, so what are you gonna do, sweep it off every time you put sand and stone down? It's good to have the sand there, because you can steer and stop on it. Yeah. And this, the-
Stone does give you a grip.
For Haiti, we're wondering what you should be writing.
I'm just saying, just watching the back.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's good.
But doesn't, doesn't the state make their first pass with just salt, or am I-
It depends on, it depends on the weather. You know, if you're getting a big storm, probably not, but if you're getting like the other day, well, the last three or four we've had this year, it's been ice. You know, then you go straight salt probably, they do.
So, that's what I'm looking at.
What do you mix, four buckets of sand or one bucket of salt?
Depends on what we, depends, I think, I think we had that discussion, I think we use four, four buckets to two tandem loads of sand.
I think that's what Moby said, it was four, four buckets of salt for two tandem loads. But I think you can do the, all the blacktop with four buckets of salt for the straight salt, can't you?
I could do it less than a tandem load.
So, if, if the town were to entertain the idea of going to a straight salt and changing our methods, we wouldn't be doing that in the middle of the winter, right? Was that something that we would transition and put into place to go into the next winter season? I'm not saying we'd do it, but I guess I'm just wondering, so we're seeing you're talking about, but is there really any action that we would take at this point in the season, or is this-
Well, it depends on when you can get it calibrated, right?
Well, I think if you get the salt, then you can get it, if you, we switched to full salt, then we can get it calibrated.
I believe very few calibrate it.
Because Pollitt said they put down 250 pounds in a mile, if it's not too bad, and if it's really, really bad, they go 500 pounds in a mile. That's what the boy told me when I asked him. He said most of the time, 250 pounds in a mile.
And do they use any, they, do they use sand as well?
I don't know, he said that's, I just asked him about the salt.
The, the last time I went down through there, there was no sand on Pollitt's road.
I, that's, I don't remember seeing sand on Pollitt's road.
But, that, that little truck puts it in the middle, then it, like you said, it goes just right, so you said they, you can still steer it, because you got, you got a steer tire on.
Yeah.
Where it's buried, the other side ain't buried up yet, like you said, at least you can steer it.
Also, if you put it in the middle, you got on the crown, so then you're, it's gonna feather out.
It goes.
So, realistically, if you all know whether it's gonna work or not, you get a load of Clearlane.
Yeah.
Or we just do it.
Yeah.
One day, just tell them straight Clearlane. And what, $10 a ton more?
I want it back.
Yeah, it's worth the $10 a ton more.
Yeah.
But the thing is, you know, on these little poohly storms, you don't wanna just put straight salt down, you know, for just a dozen, you'd just be throwing salt away.
Well, then we end up gonna have another salt, or salt storage shed, keep it separated.
Yeah.
So, what's the cost effect of this?
Well, I think we should be using that better salt right from the start.
Using the Clearlane?
Yeah.
If we're using the Clearlane, earlier in the year, when we had the first storms, when it was so cold, we put the white salt down, and then you just scrape it off and put more down, because it's not doing it.
It not do nothing, just sitting there. And the other salt would do something, and the thing is, you still can mix it with sand at times.
Right.
You know?
When you say the other salt, is that the Clearlane?
The Clearlane.
The Clearlane. So, I mean, when it gets down around 10 above, the other salt won't do nothing.
And realistically, if you're paying $10 a ton more, but we're using 30% less?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, so, I think we're, that, that's the way I think it, that's my opinion, anyway.
Give it a try.
Did you use, you used the green stuff all the time, when Tommy from church?
Because-
So, why did we stop?
Because there's no sense to put the other down, pump it off.
Because I was hopeful.
Okay. So, that's what was happening before, before we came on the board? That we just used the green stuff?
Yeah, I know, there were different colored salts that came in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can use for that much, more often.
Well, if you all wanna try it, I'd say, make a plan and try it, I mean-
What do we got to lose?
You don't need, you don't need to buy fancy equipment in order to get, try one load of Clearlane, right?
No.
So, I'd make a motion to that.
All right. We have a motion, anyone wanna second it?
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion to try one load of Clearlane, and compare it to our current practices.
Not straight Clearlane, no sand, sir.
No sand, straight Clearlane.
And for Haiti, will you spell Clearlane, is it C-L-E-A-R-L-A-N-E? We don't know, anybody know? All right, hold on. Okay. And I, when, when it comes time, will you send it to me if I have that, and I'll look it up and find out.
Maybe it's-
Yeah, might be, yeah, who knows, yeah.
And it doesn't specifically have to be Clearlane, it can be a treated salt.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That's just the brand that somebody has.
Okay. So, treated salt, like Clearlane, 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 makes, it's good name.
Now, can we get that treated, mix it with, or get the stuff to treat what we got out here, so this ain't gonna get mixed in with it, or?
We have to enter, or it's, you can, you can do that, you must, we need to do those things. We can mix our salt.
But it's magnesium chloride, not calcium chloride.
Right.
So, we'd either have to get that guy in here to buy his product, or we'd have to empty our tank to get them to fill our tank up. How much do we have in your tank?
In your bowl.
In your bowl.
I think.
And I don't know if you can treat it with the calcium chloride or not.
Yeah. I'll give the other a go.
So, we'll try one load of Clear, well, so-
When, when this is used, Doc?
When this is used up, so you can get a load in here.
Okay.
Try a load. Huh?
This is all, we're, our bill is all.
Yeah, so it might be a while.
Get it down.
All right, but we have a motion on the table, and seconded, I think, to try a load of Clearlane, or treated salt, some form of treated salt, when, when our tank gets down, and we can switch over and try for comparison. All agree, anybody, so, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great. So, one other thing I'd add on the, under roads, I'm, this, up under roads, I just wanna mention that Richard Giotti called about the end of Easy Street, and that had come up in our last meeting, as to what class road that was, and, and he had provided the paperwork that showed that it's a Class 3 summer in the road, and that we're keeping it open just sort of as an emergency egress, sort of thing, from the end of Easy Street. And in his point that he asked us to please remember, is he understands that it's not priority in our erosion, stormwater plan, that we have to address with the due dates that we have, what, 2022, and 26, and '32, or whatever. But he, you know, said it's, it might not be priority in that, but, you know, he doesn't want it to get forgotten in terms of that it does need some maintenance. But he's not asking for anything different than what's been in the agreement that's been maintained several years, but he did call, so I just wanted that to be on record, but it's important we keep an eye on that. Anything else for road, or should we move on?
How's the budget doing?
Yeah, how is the budget doing? So, um, so this would be, because, so we had a 3.9% increase, and that was without the increase that we just late off the press got from the fire department. So, with the fire department, let's see, did you do the percentage yet, Doug?
No.
I can work on it, so it's, so it's the difference between .55 and .5749, right? So-
Almost 5%.
Almost how much?
Almost 5%.
5%. Uh, so I have 4.52.
That's on the computer.
Yeah, so 4.5%. So, we went from 3.9 to 4.5 when we added in the fire department. And so, when we were hoping to do some extra paving and some other things, that was before we knew that the fire department was gonna require additional funds. So, we have to decide whether we wanna cut back on anything that we added to, or forward a budget that would be a 4.5% increase.
Leave it, let's see where we're at with the voters.
And we'll, and we'll explain in our letter what and why we're doing this, but I do, I mean, the reason we bumped that paving is that we're trying really hard to get on a rotation, so if I'm misspeaking this-
It's gonna take a while-
Yeah.
-to get up there, I mean, we're only bumping it up 5%.
5%, yeah.
You know, we got 30% to jump it, so it's gonna be-
But the ultimate goal-
At least we're, we're moving-
Yeah. The, the ultimate goal, so people know, is to get so that we have a rotation with our pavement going, so that-
By the time it reaches this-
By the time it reaches its length, that we're coming back again, and we're not having these possible roads, and, and also, because the longer they start to deteriorate, then the worse, more expensive it is to repair, right?
Yeah.
So, so ultimately, this will be, you know, future thinking and trying to plan, but we're trying to incrementally bump up our budget, so that we can get there. We were at 93,000 the last couple of years. We had hoped to bring it to 105 this time, and so-
Well, we went to 100 and 105.
Right.
And we're, if the goal hasn't jumped up any, it's roughly 130, so, you know, rather than jump it to 130-
Right.
We'll work our way up and get a little bit more done next year.
But I think that's a good reason to, to, to do what you said, Steve, we'll, you know, we put, we forward, because we think it's a responsible budget, because we think it's responsible that we need to deal with those things. And we'll explain it in our letter, and, okay? So, I would, so, so then essentially, we would be putting forward, we'd be asking the town to vote a total budget of one, oh, I'm gonna pause here for a minute. Oh, I know why we did it last year differently, it's because it was such a big, different number of what we were going to raise, because we had all that grant money coming in.
Start the bridge and all the big budget.
Yeah, because actually, these numbers aren't very different, so maybe we wanna go back, yeah. Uh, yeah, a couple hundred thousand, so we'd be raising a total, so, so the total budget, we'd be asking them to approve a total budget of 1,280,223.80, and we'd be asking, we'd be collecting, towards that budget from tax revenues, we would be collecting Oh, the other thing that I think it's worth telling people if they're listening, is that our budget also, we've been working really hard for years to get rid of the reliance on the delinquent tax line, because of auditors, and, you know, we've been advised by the Vermont League, and auditors, other towns, everything that we, that's, that's not a number you can rely on, and if you build it into your budget as saying that it's revenues coming in, and then it doesn't come in, you know, you're, you're left in a tough spot. And so, we have been working for years to bring that down. It used to be like 60,000, we have a lot in there.
It was 150 at one point.
At one point, right, I think when I came on the board, it was at 60, and we've been whittling it down, and this budget that we're bringing in front of people this year eliminates that. So, so although there's the increase, there's much more certainty that we can stick to this budget than we've been able to have in the past, so. So, we would be, yeah, so those would be our numbers. So, I would, I would hear a motion to accept that as the budget? Okay.
Paul beat me, I'll second it.
All right, so Paul made the motion, Steve seconded the motion to put forward the budget as presented by Doug, and worked on by the committee, and that was those numbers. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great. All right, we've got a budget to put forward to people, yay. Next, action on the, well, I'm gonna, let's, let's move on, because I might, so, so on our agenda is action on the Rutland Regional Plan Commission's Public Works Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement, actually, maybe I should have moved on, do you know anything about that, Charlie? So, this is something that's just popped on the agenda, and I've had no preliminary look at it at all, does it have anybody else?
No, I haven't, so table it, then explain.
Well, I'll, I'll try to look at it, so I, because it's in here, and I can read through it, but let's, let's move on to something else, and maybe while-
Traffic ordinance.
Sure, if we can do the traffic ordinance. So, Brad, you wanna say what you and I've been trying to tackle with this?
Okay, well, our existing traffic ordinance does not cover a lot of the signs that are up around town. It has discrepancies as to what is listed in the ordinance for speed limits compared to what the signs on the roads say. So, I made a list of all the roads, Lynn and I split it in half, and went around to see what the signs actually said, or if they were in fact signs, and we found a number of roads that have no speed limits posted on them, which translates into state law kicking in, where the speed limit is 50 miles an hour. And when you think of a road like Bromley Road, or Raymond Road, with a 50 mile an hour speed on it, that's a little bit scary. So, I think the best way to address this would be to go down road by road, and have discussion on it. So, starting with Town Highway 1, which begins with Mount Tabor Avenue coming in from Route 7, the speed limit, according to the existing ordinance, and according to what's posted, is 25 miles an hour.
And that is what's actually in place?
That's what's in place, and there is a stop sign by the Veterans Monument. And I, I think everybody feels that's sufficient and good, and no problem, right?
Yeah, let's, let's make it that you'll read it off, and if somebody has a problem with it, they'll say so, if you don't hear from us, then we're in agreement, does that sound good?
Okay. So, then we take the section of Brook Road from Main Street to Easy Street, which right now is posted at 30 miles an hour, and we've had a traffic study that showed that it would be prudent to have that at 25 miles an hour. So, we're proposing to change that to 25 miles an hour. Everybody good with that?
No, I think we ought to leave it at 30. I don't think 30's too fast.
Down through, down through that section, definitely, from Easy Street down to here, I, I don't agree with 30.
Jesus, I- Okay.
We're saying, we're saying from Main Street to Fisher.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah.
I lived on that corner of Reese's Cross Road, and I tell you what, you try to pull out of there, and-
You know, just to get, yeah, I'll be picked up for speeding every time, and, because I don't move those 25 miles through there.
I don't think anybody does.
But you're not doing 40 either, they're not doing 40 either, you know, they're not gonna stop you at 30.
You get, you get 10 miles an hour leeway anyway, so. You get, you get 10 miles an hour leeway anyway, so.
Yeah, okay.
So then we have discussion about the, um, stop sign at May, at where South Main Street comes to Brook Road, just at the north end of the bridge. There's a stop sign there now. Do you wanna keep that stop?
At the foot of the hill?
Not at the foot of the hill, but if you are coming north on South Main Street, you've just crossed the bridge.
Yeah, you have to stop.
And there's a stop sign. Do we want to keep that stop sign, or do we want to change it to a yield?
I'd say change it to a yield.
I feel it should be a yield.
I yield. I mean, I don't, I don't drive through there often enough to, you know, since I come from the Four Corners area, I don't know, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, I don't live there to know what the issue is, so I think I have to defer to people who live downtown.
Well, we had a lot of discussion on that, on the business, we had the signs up, down the next day, and then we had a lot of slack from people in the village that, uh, stop signs go back up again.
So people in the village really want?
Well, no.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have, I have the, um, petitions right here, and there were 25 signatures to have that stop sign put up, and there were 107 signatures to have the stop sign taken down.
From the people that had business in town, at the corner?
From the people that travel on the road, these are all registered.
Not what I'm not talking about, I'm talking to ones that had business at the corner.
Right, but now there's no more business there.
No, there's still the same traffic.
Yeah, the nickel stores, there's no business there, you're telling me.
Hey.
That has changed, hasn't it, though?
See, stop sign going down, yes, but going north and south on Seven shouldn't, they should be yield both ways.
I don't disagree, but people don't yield anyways, half the time. I mean, if they just stop, slow down a little bit, they still blast through the stop sign, so are they gonna blast through on the yield more?
They're going through there 45, 50, 60.
When it was, before the signs were up.
So if there's a yield sign that would address that problem, and they don't have to come to a complete stop and count five Mississippi's.
Yeah.
And if they don't do that, stand a chance of getting a ticket because they did what's called a rolling stop. So I'm trying to make it realistic.
I've never had a ticket for that.
Don't talk too loud, or you'll be stopped.
Oh, I have, believe me, I have.
Well, well, the nickel stores down there, if you see a stop sign, but they're not there anymore.
And there's a lawyer's office there, there's no business in the green building.
I'd say yield both ways here, stop going down off the hill, that's it.
I don't disagree, no.
Well, it would make truck traffic easier if there was a yield there, because when you come down the hill and you stop, and somebody comes up and they're stopped, if you're pulling a trailer.
Yeah.
It's a pain, because now you've gotta sit there and wave these people to go.
Yeah, you gotta wave for them to go, and otherwise they're just yielding up.
I've had that problem with horse trailers.
Yeah.
So, majority agrees that it.
All right, go to yield, move on.
Yield.
Both ways.
Well, we'll get there in a second, because that's a different road.
I was gonna say, where?
Okay, so Brook Road from Easy Street to Four Corners is presently posted at 30 miles an hour.
I couldn't drive at 30. Like, I do that, my tractor's coming down it.
I know how fast I can follow Lynn going down that road.
Sorry, sorry, Paul.
I think it should be at least 35. I go with 35.
Okay. Steve, you would rate 35?
Yeah, 35.
That's better than 30.
35, yeah.
Okay, so that's gonna be 35. And then we are up at Four Corners in front of Margaret Coburn's house. And there is a stop sign there.
Yeah.
Which I'm saying would better be a yield sign.
I, I have to say that that's the one that worries me. We have a daycare center on that corner, and the school bus driver has come and told us that even with those signs and even with her school bus sign out, that, you know, they just need all the help they can get to get cars to be responsible there. Children are getting dropped off by their parents, sometimes they're dropped off on the side of the building, you know, children run ahead of parents, they can step into the road. I think something, I think something that's hard and fast and is, and that could be enforced as a stop, I, I think it's a good idea there. It's, it's a daycare, it's little kids.
Well, you have stop signs on two other corners, and what you're talking about takes up probably 10 minutes out of the day.
What do you mean?
When children are being dropped off or picked up.
Oh, oh, but actually.
If your kid's the one that got run over, the 10 minutes ain't gonna melt them up.
And, and actually, that's not true. Um, it's true, the bulk of the kids come at a certain, but, but parents drop off at different times of day depending on their work schedule, and they pick up at different times of day, and then there's children who come from school and get off the school bus there, and then their parents pick them up later. It's really more fluid than that.
Yeah, it's all day long.
Yeah, it's, it is, it's all day long. I just, it's just, it's children and I just, you know, um, and I know, because I roll through that stop sign, you know?
I do too, and when you're coming down from Timoth.
But knowing that I gotta stop, and, you know, knowing, I don't know, I just, I think.
So realistically, what's the difference, or, you're saying we have to have a stop sign, but you just said you don't stop for it. What's the point in having a stop sign if you're not gonna stop for it?
So if you yield, you're slowing up anyway.
The argument of there's kids there, but I'm not gonna stop, but everybody else should stop, is where it's coming to.
Well, I, I stop when I think, I, I don't always roll through it, I try to stop. I'm just saying, and when I say I roll through it, I'm not moving constantly, but I guess what I'm saying is that, 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 you know, what were you saying, the 10 Mississippi? 1 Mississippi, 2 Mississippi? I'm not doing that at that stop, but I'm coming to a stop and then moving on quickly. Um.
No, nobody stops coming from Timoth down and going through Pollitt, they, they just go and go.
Well, maybe we make that one a yield, it's on the opposite side of the road. And if the other two are stopped.
Has that one always been a stop sign?
Just coming from Pollitt in's always been stopped.
But Timoth Road turning right onto Danby Ballot.
No, it's not always been stopped, no.
That is not always been stopped.
Maybe make that one a yield. And the other two are stopped?
Yeah.
This will be done.
Well, the stop, the stop sign is from Timoth.
Yeah.
Stop sign is from, from Timoth.
And Dave's involved.
You stopped right there.
Right.
And the rest of it was all freegoing.
Right.
No, years ago, the stop was coming from Pollitt.
Last one I remembered was, the stop was right there where Christopher Shee's, uh, trailer was.
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
Since 1979, I don't exactly know what it was.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how many accidents there were, but, um.
I don't know if there's ever been an accident.
But like you said, things change down here, we got a daycare center up there.
Well, I would also say that when you had a store there, you had more traffic than the daycare.
Yeah, you had a lot of traffic, yeah.
Well, but, but children are unpredictable, and they, you know, they don't always, yeah. And we, and we also, we also have a horseback ride.
They go into the building, and then they don't go out of the building until they get into the car to go home, because they go up back and clean the herd, if finished in there.
Yeah, it's, it's the time when they're jumping out of the car and, you know.
Yeah, well, the parents usually right there, when they're.
Right, you wanna take a second?
They know.
That's, that's the thing.
Well, and if somebody has yielded, they're not going 40 miles an hour, it's a yield.
Yeah.
Which is a modified stop.
Well, so coming from.
It's a rolling stop, is what it is, it's a rolling stop.
Coming from Timoth, that direction yield seems to make more sense, because.
Or a complete stop, if traffic is coming, or a school bus has its stop.
Coming, coming from Timoth, when you're turning right, or e- either way, coming from Timoth, you have the best visibility of any place in terms of what the other cars are. Well, so what if we leave two stop signs and then yield sign? And then, you know, the other thing is, those people are, if they're hearing us, and if they live right there and they have particular, you know, interests in it and understandings of what happens on those corners, we'd love to hear from them.
Right, and the way this works is, we propose this tonight, and we advertise what we have proposed, and then at next month's meeting, we adopt it.
We adopt it, yeah, so their people will have a time to say. So can we go with the yield on, from Timoth and two stop signs, is that what we decide?
I say two yield signs and one stop sign in front of.
Where's the second yield sign?
The Timoth, corner of Timoth Road and Danby Ballot and, um, Brook Road intersection of Timoth.
No, all.
The stop sign in front of the daycare center, which now is out in the pavement, and I feel gives sufficient coverage for people dropping off, because I have watched as people drop off, and they pull up to the front of the building in that area that is basically roped off by the stop.
Yeah, some do, some do. I mean, I'm sure you've seen that, but I've also seen the other, I, I live up there.
You've seen people drop children off in the middle of the road?
No, I've seen, I've seen people park on the side of the road, where people used to park for the store, you know, on the side, um, more across where data tents used to be, and then they would get, um, you know, then they walk their children to the door, but, you know, children are children, they don't always stay right next to your heels, it's not like a dog with a leash. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying what I've seen, you know, I just think it's, um, and, and I, you know, I also.
Okay, well, let's, we're, we're kind of jumping ahead anyway. This is about the sign at the intersection of Brook Road and Timoth Road. The other.
So the one.
Two signs will come up.
Right, so again, I, I guess I, you know, I, I might be the outlier, and I'll get outvoted, but, um, you know, my dog was killed there when somebody came through there at 75, coming up the Brook Road, and just, and the Four Corners store was there, and all the people and everything else, but with no sign, they just flew right through there. I would have yielded, do the same thing, I don't know.
So what's all the board? Steve?
How do you enforce a yield? Seriously, how do you enforce a yield?
The sheriff does his.
So how does the sheriff say, how do they determine whether somebody's yielded or not?
If there's traffic coming, they need to yield to it, they don't have the right.
Right, so what it means is, is that, that you find out if they didn't yield when there's an accident.
Well, that's after the fact, if you go to court and there's a lawsuit, but, you know, a yield, yield by definition, according to the driver's manual, means slow down and proceed with caution.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is that's a difficult thing for, to, to enforce, because, you know, because.
Well, if somebody's going through there 40, 50, 60, or whatever miles an hour, that's not yield.
Well.
That's not slowing down and proceeding with caution.
But where there are children, somebody rolling through it 20 miles could be a problem. I just, I personally think stop signs are proven there, but on one voice.
So I think we need to pull the board. Steve?
This is the sign as you're headed up through.
Yes.
In front of Margaret Coburn's house.
I'm willing to go to a yield, because I know people aren't stopping anyhow.
Yeah.
Paul?
I'm willing to go to a yield.
Doug is a yield.
You're off the hot seat now.
I'm a yield. So we've got three yields.
It becomes a yield.
Okay. Okay, so now we have the Danby Pollitt Road, which is.
Stop.
A stop, and everybody good with that, in front of the store, a stop?
Yeah.
And that's 40 miles an hour, how do we feel about that?
And it's 40 miles an hour.
I think 45 would be better there.
How much?
Well, I'd like to see that one 45.
45 to the Pollitt line?
It's, it's 45 from there to Timoth line, and the road is just as good the other way.
Then when you get to Timoth, they go back to 40 again.
Yeah, you get to Timoth, they go to 50, yeah. You get in Timoth, it's 50.
You got the straightaway down through there, and it's 40.
When you get by the snack bar, you go by the snack bars, 50 miles an hour.
How many go by at 40 miles an hour?
You know.
So the only observation is one tricky spot on that stretch of road, and it's not going in that direction so much, it's when you're coming down from Garell White's, and you hit that, you know, you know the curve where the road cancels the wrong way? If, if somebody didn't know the road, we all know the road, and we know that, but if somebody didn't know the road and it was posted at 45, but they still stay on that, it was 50.
I mean, there ain't, nobody does 40 on that road. Everybody's doing 45, I can't do 40 on that road.
Yeah.
I know you can't.
I don't know why.
They, they have signs, uh, yellow, uh.
Yeah, the suggested speed limit.
Yeah.
Right, that's a conditions.
Yeah, that's a conditions thing.
Because that's pretty hard to go up.
Yeah.
From, from Pollitt, 40 miles an hour, I tell you, I am, when I ride with Sherri, I'm so friggin' pissed, like, it's time to get home, because she will do friggin' 40.
Okay.
And I caught on that, I'm doing 50.
45, and moving on.
Okay.
But the thing with them roads, that, that, Danby, Timoth and Danby Pollitt, oh.
Wait, Better Back Roads. They were done by the state, I don't think we can do that.
There was 50 on Pollitt, right there by Glenn Gould, it's 50 coming back this way. Don't change again, they're a quick way out.
The state set them up without even conferring with us, they put all the signs up, all the stop signs, so.
We're gonna have to check with the state as soon as we can.
We're gonna have to probably go through the state or the sheriffs.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna go through the state, if we have to go through the state, then whatever we decide on the stop signs and yield signs might not matter.
Might not matter.
Because if the state is saying we have to have stop signs there.
Yeah.
Unless we're gonna get Ken Abbott to come fight with them.
Yeah, he's wound up, no, so you will.
According to this booklet that we got from Vermont, Vermont Local Roads Program v. Trance Training Center, it says that we have the right to determine what's what.
Yeah, what was the grant that, there was, was that the Better Back Roads?
High, high risk rural.
It was the High Risk Rural Roads, that's right, High Risk Rural Roads grant, and that's when they determined those speeds and signs, and they gave us the guardrails, and, you know, we got a lot out, out of that.
All the street signs.
Yeah, the street signs, all those new street signs up there, so I, we will need to check, and, and, um, and we, and we certainly can, you know, is it, is it, is it worth it? Because, um, you know, what's, reality is, if we don't tell the sheriff.
It's only five miles.
It's five miles difference, and if we don't tell the sheriff to go be there, he's not gonna be there anyway, so I don't know.
I'm, I'm, I'm not doing 50 when I come from the, I'm, I'm never under 50.
I know.
Well, then, then again, uh, how many times anybody been picked up on them roads there? And you know they fly by up your place.
Hmm.
That's, they see that mile straightaway up through there, and I've seen them go through there 70 miles an hour.
I do 50, 55, 60.
I've seen people picked up there.
Yeah, there.
Yeah, up by, you know.
Yeah.
Up past your.
But they gotta be doing a lot more than 40.
Oh, yeah, no, they're flying, when they, yeah, they're not.
We're gonna be all night on this west side.
Yes, so let's, let's just move on.
Okay, so are we leaving that at 40?
Let's leave that 40, because I don't think we want to muck with that, yeah.
Okay, so now, Timoth Road.
45, it's a good.
Is 45.
Let's just leave everything just the way it is.
Well, no, there's, no, there's a bunch of stuff.
They ain't gonna do a good darn you over it.
Well, there's a bunch of stuff.
But there's things that aren't really on the ground, so Depot Street, 25, you did that one.
Hang, hang on, we're on, um, Timoth Road here.
Yeah.
45, now what do you want to do for the sign?
Oh.
In front of, like, June Green's house, that corner?
Yield.
Yield.
I'm outnumbered. Make it a yield.
There's a, a question. Did, uh, they put that stop sign up?
They might have. I'm not sure how. They just sort of appeared there, those stop signs, so.
They might have put that.
Yeah. So all those stop signs, we might not be able to change.
Okay, I'll check on it. Okay, Depot Street in the ordinance as it's written right now is twenty-five and there's a stop sign on both ends. I think everybody's good with that.
Yep.
Baker Brook Road is thirty miles an hour.
Nope, it's twenty-five. I checked.
Twenty-five. I know that. Plus fifteen miles an hour on some of the corners.
Yeah.
Right.
Suggested.
And.
But that did have traffic study done on it.
Yeah. And there is a yield sign by, um, where Timoth Road.
No, the yield sign is, is coming down off of Baker Brook where it turns to.
What comes down up, Timoth Pond Road.
Where Timoth Pond Road hits Baker Brook.
Yeah, that's where the.
Near the Timoth Road.
Well, the yield, if you're coming down off the Timoth Pond Road, the hill there, the yield's on the Timoth Pond Road, not on, on Baker.
Baker Brook.
Not on Baker Brook, right.
However.
But there is a yield sign on Baker Brook. Or, or is it there?
No.
We want one there though. Then is that what you talked about last time?
Well, now, he's talking about the other end.
Scottsville.
Yes, Scottsville.
And that'll come up down here, um, when we get down to sixteen.
Okay.
Okay. So Old Otis Road.
No posted speed limit.
No posted speed limit. So what do you wanna do?
Just be pretty good.
So if we post speed limits, we've gotta put speed limit signs all over these road and, and I think, I think there are.
So just leave them?
One, two, three, four.
If they don't have it now, just leave it? That's fine with me.
Well, when I was constable, the rule of thumb was all roads in the state of Vermont are either thirty miles an hour or fifty miles an hour. And it's the discretion of the officer. So if they pull you over on Otis Road and they say, no, this is a thirty mile an hour road, then the only way you're gonna get out of it is to fight it and hope they don't show up. Because it's, the last I knew it was officer discretion.
So I mean, if we have it in the ordinance and we don't post it, then that gives the officer the backup that he needs.
That would give them backup, but I don't know. How much difference it would really make. Because it's not a, a posted on the road, so they would, if you went to court, you'd be able to say, well, it's not posted. I don't know what speed limit is.
And any of the, any of the book, booklets will tell you that all roads in Vermont are fifty miles an hour unless otherwise posted. That's the way it reads in the book.
Yeah.
And it'll say tire, it'll say.
I think it.
Well, I think unless we're prepared to put signs up on, you know, seventeen more roads.
Look like we're gonna put a lot of signs up.
Yeah, I've got, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
I say just leave it this way. I say leave the thing, leave it well enough alone. They had no accidents on all these roads. I say leave well enough alone.
We've got ones that, that we feel are tricky. We do.
Okay. So, so on these that don't have any, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Well, we've been doing.
So, but do we want the ordinance to say thirty and we just don't post them? Is that what?
No, 'cause then having, I've been trying to get two of the back roads posted or surveyed by the sheriff. They have to do a study. But then after the study's done, it's your discretion as to what the speed is. Anything under twenty-five is not enforceable.
Right.
So, and the ones that have been done has been Baker Brook, Calvin Hill last year, Easy Street this year, Corey Hill the year before.
And this section. And this section here.
Yeah. So as, I think we should just keep going each year and pick up a couple of these roads. There are certain roads that have traffic, or speeding problems like Dambie Hill and Baker Brook and Corey Hill have. So, and Easy Street. So we, I think we should hit them roads little, you know, two at a time or whatever, 'cause that's about all time the sheriff has a chance to do. And then we can post them to twenty-five and whatever it takes, two, three, four signs to, 'cause you only have to put the sign wherever there's an intersection.
Right.
That comes in. So I would say the ones that we posted to twenty-five, make sure we get the signs up in the places they're supposed to. And then next year we'll figure out the next two roads we wanna do that seem to be a problem. And then we'll take care of that as we go and it ain't gonna be a, going out buying.
Hundred, hundred signs.
Hundred signs.
Hundred and fifty signs. Because you're gonna have the signs every so many feet.
Yeah. So that's what I, that's what I recommend in, um, like I said.
Okay. So Otis Road, we're gonna leave alone and we're just gonna keep the stop sign on the corner.
Yep.
Lily Hill. Um, again, there's no speed, so we're just gonna leave it alone and keep the stop sign on the corner. Green Hill, um.
No speed.
No speed.
There's no speed and there's, uh, what did you discover at the?
There's no sign, uh, there's no yield sign, um, at, at either end.
Leave it alone?
Yeah.
Kellie Hill, leave it alone?
Yep.
Yeah. There's no sign.
Little Village, leave it alone?
Yeah.
Is there a stop sign where Green Hill comes into?
There's a stop sign at, um, at the Dambie Pollitt Road, Little Village and the Dambie Pollitt Road, or is, whatever it is, where, what, what?
Route one thirty-three, I mean?
Um, no. So, um.
Oh, you're talking about in the dip?
I'm talking about in the dip, there's a stop sign there.
Right. But what about, and there's one at one thirty-three. So stops at both ends. So that's good. Okay. Timoth Pond Road.
That's them.
There's no, no signs.
And there is the yield.
Yeah.
Poisonton Cross Road, nothing?
No posted signs, no.
And stop sign.
There's stop sign at the Timoth Road, nothing on the other end.
Yeah.
And just leave it that way?
Yeah.
Tiff Road, it stops on.
No posted. Stop at Timoth, but again, nothing on, nothing in front of Pond, right?
Calvin Hill is listed at thirty?
That had the traffic study done, so it's just a matter of us getting up and putting the signs where they're supposed to be.
Well, and having it in the works.
Right. Yeah. So that'll be, that'll be listed as thirty.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're gonna do them now or put it down there now, so.
And there's a stop.
And the speed sign that's been brought up, a couple of different people have mentioned it and never paid much attention, but they got one right in front of Burr's vegetable stand.
Right. Which I don't like so.
It ain't supposed to be, I mean, just have one where the intersections come together as you pull onto the road. So that actually should be thirty taken off and there used someplace else and then put a twenty-five. At the other end down on the Timoth Road, coming up over Calvin from the backside and then.
Oh, wait. So you want it to be a different speed limit there?
Well, we've already had the traffic survey.
Yeah. Alright. So then we want, so you're gonna want to break it out. Yeah.
So Calvin Hill from Brook to where is thirty?
And it.
So Calvin Hill from the Timoth Road to where is twenty-five? Is that where?
Uh, where it comes onto the Dambie Hill Road. That, that traffic survey's been done.
Oh, so all the way from Timoth Road to the intersection of Dambie Hill is?
They did that, uh, right after they did Easy Street.
Alright. So that's twenty-five. And then currently.
We just gotta put the signs up.
Okay, now.
We need the ordinance to say.
Well, why, why would we want thirty from the Brook Road to Dambie Hill? That's certainly if the rest of it's twenty.
To Dambie Hill.
Yeah, off across from.
Coming up past Hoppers. Cause that's Calvin Hill.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. That, the Hopper Road, Hoppers, okay. Uh, yeah, we'll just put, have to put a sign there.
The whole thing.
So currently there's a stop sign at the bottom where Calvin Hill hits, um, Dambie Hill Road.
Yes.
No, not coming down.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Once you get to that triangle. Yeah.
At the triangle, there's currently a stop sign. Is that what you're suggesting you change to a yield or is that?
No. What I was thinking is, um, if you are coming up from the Brook Road. And you get by the cemeteries, that there should be a yield sign on Calvin Hill. You're yielding to the people on Dambie Hill that are coming up through.
So you don't come up past Hoppers and just straight on to Dambie Hill?
Right. Or continue straight across onto Calvin Hill. I mean, that's, that's a tough little intersection right there.
Yeah, yeah. A good part of yield sign, but at cemetery.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll agree with that. No, 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 no.
No, no. You're, if you're coming up from the Brook Road and you've come past Hoppers and you get to the intersection of Dambie Hill, you should yield to the Dambie Hill people.
Cause that's hard to see back.
Quite across there.
Towards ya.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Scottsville. Um, some places it says fifteen and you just said that.
So.
That's not enforceable, but that was part of that.
Yeah, that's part of the lawsuit we had.
Yeah. Um, okay. So that is all posted.
Scottsville's twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
It's posted there now.
Twenty-five and we've got, yeah.
Yeah.
And I changed that on my list. And it's got the stop signs on both ends, but.
We got, we got one yield sign to put up.
Yeah, there's no signs where Baker Brook takes off and.
We're gonna put a stop sign or a yield sign coming from Timoth Road.
Timoth Pond.
Comes down, just put a yield sign there just to kinda, yeah.
Which one are you yielding? Scottsville or Baker Brook?
Uh, Baker Brook.
Okay.
Okay. So Baker Brook is gonna yield.
Yeah.
Okay. Tiff Road has, um, a stop sign at the end of it and no speed limit, so we're not gonna bother. North Hill Lane has, um, no speed limit and it.
There's no sign.
There's no sign.
I would, I would.
I wouldn't. There's only two houses down there anyways.
Cascades Road is listed as nothing. There's no speed limit signs on Cascades Road and there's a stop sign at each end. Leave it. Raymond Road has no signs, no speed, no nothing.
Leave it. Ain't much traffic on that one either.
And Abbott says nothing. Gym Town.
So just the only place where, where Raymond Road, um.
And Staples Road, I mean.
Yeah. I've seen people have some, you know, like, like, oh my God, who, who yields there? I've seen confusion there.
Well, and the people, um.
I've never seen an accident there. Oh, that would be obnoxious. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just leave it as it is. Yeah.
I say just leave it.
We're not hearing from people that it's a problem. Let's.
Oh, okay. Okay. So the Gym Town Road.
That should be ten miles an hour.
Oh, I thought it should be sixty.
It is.
That's what those cars the other night thought.
Leave it.
Yeah.
Just leave it and the stop sign is at the end.
Yeah.
Okay. John Corey Road, leave it?
Yeah, leave it.
Stop sign is at the end. Smokey House Road by the Reed Cemetery has nothing, but there are stop signs.
There's a stop sign on the Brook Road, but enough and, um, and at the Dambie Mountain Road actually. There's both there now. Yeah.
And Dambie Mountain Road is thirty?
Yeah.
It is. There's thirty mile an hour signs, yep.
And yield.
And there's now the stop as an intersection of Keeler.
It should be.
Well, we, we put that there when we were doing the bridge and we never took it down. Yeah.
Okay.
But you know, I actually think it's a good idea to have a yield there. I can't tell you when I have my horses there, how many times people went through into my fence there.
Not a stop.
That's why those reflectors are there. I put those up years ago.
So a yield, but not a stop. Okay. That's what we've got written down here. Okay. Now, North Main Street. Route seven to three hundred feet north of the school is forty miles an hour.
Yeah.
Then it cuts down to twenty-five miles an hour from three hundred feet north of the school to the intersection of Brook Road. And, um, there's been discussion about changing that stop to a yield.
Yeah. We'll, we'll yield that.
You agree?
So which, so that's in front of Nipples?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, I, I'm not there enough to know, so.
I say yield it. I don't know how many times, when you wanna come in a truck and trailer, you gotta wait for somebody to.
So basically.
Can't see the stop sign anyways. That, well, I like most covered up.
That's true. So basically you just, you have yields coming from either this direction. This hard stop is coming down off.
Yeah, yeah. That's what, come up where it'll gotta be a hard stop.
Raish Cross Road, leave it and it does have a stop sign.
Yeah.
And Edmunds Road, um, leave it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's no speed.
Keeler Road.
Actually, so interesting. Edmunds Road has a stop sign and that's again left over from when we did the detour.
That was left over from the detour.
I think it makes sense to make that.
Do you wanna change that to a yield, to put a yield sign?
They never had anything before.
I mean, nobody's ever gonna be there to enforce it, so I'm not sure it's worth taking the time to change it, but it makes, it makes no sense to have it be a stop sign.
Use the sign somewhere else.
I'd say sold it, or stole it by now anyways.
They'll have some signs in reserve for when they get shot out or whatever. Um, okay. So now we are on Keeler Road. Which is gonna be nothing except a stop sign.
At the Brook Road, yes, that has to be a stop.
Yeah, that's good.
And Dambie Hill from Brook Road to Raish is.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five with a stop sign.
And Raish to Calvin is twenty-five.
Is twenty-five, not thirty?
Is it not twenty-five? It's not thirty? Okay.
That, that was part of the, that was part of the Dambie Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah. So everybody's happy with twenty-five?
Yeah.
Romley Road is nothing but a stop sign on the end by the Brook Road. Dambie Hill from Calvin Hill to the Lewis Farm is twenty-five actually.
And they want another sign in the middle of a long straightaway by Viscousy's. Cause I've had two different people say that once they leave Eddie Lewis's and they're headed towards Dambie, of course, that's a shortcut. Everybody's taking a shortcut. And, um, well, you know, you're right there. And they said they put another sign up just to kinda remind people.
Okay.
That it's twenty-five.
And, and there are a lot of people who walk.
Oh, I know. I saw people there too. They're liking dogs. Is that your family that I waved at?
Um, no, but Penny was out walking her dog.
No, it wasn't Penny. It was some family, some guy with a beard and.
Oh, there's a new family.
At the, at Bro Brian's house.
Yes.
Yeah.
Two little kids.
Ah, well, they've taken a long walk. They were down by your house.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's twenty-five. Easy Street is gonna be twenty-five, right, Paul?
Yeah. Corey Hill is twenty-five. The sign's already up.
Okay. And South Main Street from Brook Road to Barn Road is twenty-five.
Yep.
And, um, where is that yield sign that I was talking about? Oh, that was, I guess I was thinking by the bridge here, which we talked about already.
Right.
It's gonna be yield. And then from the Barn Road to Mount Tabor Line is forty.
Yeah. That's what's posted.
Okay. We're done.
So then the next step is to, yeah.
Probably the next thing we should decide if people got any roads that they feel are, you know, a problem and need it. Well, I'd like to get two more roads done to get it. We had a rough time getting them here last year because they were doing surveys.
Traffic survey.
The traffic survey and then we can, you know, they said they can do it anyways, but we're supposed to have the survey done. So then they come down, set up the speed cart for a week, take the average and then, then we can set it the way we want. So. So we'll just, between now and the summer, figure out if somebody's got another problem area. And, um, you know, if the speed's on, if they're speeding by your place up there.
Well, Lynn was just saying people were speeding by her house.
They are. I think I want one of those things.
Well, as you know, once the speed part is there, we had a couple of fobs at over a hundred miles an hour here.
Yeah, and that still boggles my mind. But the, those, that, the vehicles that went by the other night had to be doing fifty. I mean, it's a dead end road and it was slippery. It was muddy. It's, they were, it was muddy conditions. Did you hear them Charlie? They wake you up? Lowers heck. We're the whole neighborhood up.
Charlie was out.
Okay. So we will get this written up and advertised to the news guy and.
I only.
Where we knew it. What's that?
So.
Next, we have the audit report.
Yeah.
Right. When you turn the.
So, um, so you're gonna write up the.
By Ralph's.
Would you email it to all us?
Coming from this way.
And, and.
Just put a yield, right where you're, right where the dry hydrant is.
Then nobody has any edits. And give it a date and time.
Or just put a yield sign there because actually Scottsville Road is the true way.
Yeah.
I know it. We, we talked about putting it up the other way. We can.
Get you at?
Uh, two-nine-three-five.
Yeah, that's the thing. I think just putting the sign there maybe because, you know. If it don't work, we'll move it across the road to the other side.
Okay. So, um, so the process is gonna be that Brad's gonna write up the new ordinance based on the numbers and the descriptions that we just did. Um, he's gonna email it to each of us and he's gonna give us a drop dead date that we have to have our, if we have any edits to something we saw as an error, to let him know by a certain time. If he doesn't hear from us, he's gonna assume to go ahead and post it in the paper. Because I think otherwise it's just, it's just gonna drag on forever.
You got my cell phone?
Right? And then it gets posted in the paper. People will read it and if people have any questions or comments about it, they should come to our next meeting to discuss it. Yeah. Um, alright. So, um, audit report. You all got that in your packets. And, um. So we have had the completion of our audit report and the report is here. Um, you've heard Doug say that there are a number of recommendations that they've made around, um, really it's the numbering of the accounts and how they're, um, kept track. And he's looking forward to completing those. Um, there are also findings that have always been the findings for every audit. Um, there are also findings that have always been the findings for every audit we've ever done, which is the one area that we don't have complete and other control over is the dump stickers, because it's cash basis and um, so we can noodle that if we want, but that's nothing new, nothing that we didn't know before. Um, and then um, in terms of recommendations, Brad, do you remember where there's some others areas?
There's that couple pages.
Segregation, um, so that they were making some recommendations like um, like I saw something here about fraud, um, putting in a fraud policy and different things. So I think that um, um, that it's worth taking a close look at this and, and maybe deciding which policies and things that we, you know, want to go forward with those recommendations and put in place. And so, maybe we'll have to resurrect a little bit of, we, we used to have a policy committee that would do that. Um, Hope, when she was on the board, headed that up. Um, but, so I think if we decide we want some policy, we should probably form a little subcommittee, and there might even be people at large who'd like to help us with that too. Um, and we can draft some language for people to consider. Does that sound like a plan?
And I believe the LCT has sample files, so we'll just kinda change the town.
Right, they do. So I, but I do think that some of these, like the fraud policy would be, uh, it would be approved a thing. And the auditors are suggesting it because it helps protect the town, it's worth doing. And this is public record, if anybody wants to see it, they certainly can.
Yeah, I left one in the town clerk's office for people to examine.
Good, um, Brock Rehabilitation Loan. So Doug left, but um, he and Tammy confirmed it to, with me, that Doug did email Tammy the update, so that there's now the complete update as to what's been paid to date. And um, Tammy is drafting the um, the letters that we'll have on file that will go out asking for remittance for people to be paying, um, and to set up monthly payment schedules. Um, so that's in progress, and we should likely have more to report at the next meeting. But what, what we were waiting for was that updated figures and that, the bill after tax season was over, so, um, so that's now done.
I already flipped this in here?
Yep. We're done.
We're done, okay. Well, let's just move on then, real quick.
Perfect timing.
Um-
Making motions with dirt.
Hold on one second. We do have this action on the RRPC Public Works Emergency Mutual Aid. So um, I read this through while you all were chatting about Road Sog. I figured I wasn't gonna win that argument about the yield sign thing. I'm pretty good at that. Um, so it says, "We encourage you to review the enclosed agreement and discuss it with your emergency management director and highway department." That's why I asked if you had known anything about it, Charlie. "Our goal is for interested municipalities to approve and execute the agreement by March first." So, e- even though our agenda says that we, it says, "Action has to be taken," the letter that, as I'm reading it, doesn't seem to imply um, that action has to be taken um, at this, until March first, so it gives us some time. So I'm assuming that Janice has probably sent this to each of us, and so people to look it over. It says again, "Adoption of this agreement is not required. It's an option if you feel your community will benefit from participating in a regional mutual aid program. The RRPC will continue to provide emergency management planning services to your community regardless of whether you participate in this program." Um, and it sounds like they, what they're talking about here is, they've worked to develop a municipal emergency management directors and highways department personnel to develop, oh no, wait, sorry. They directed those personnel to develop an emergency mutual aid agreement for public works departments within Rutland region. So this has to, I thought, so it has to be about public works, do you know about this?
We use mutual aid all the time.
Well, for the fire department, but um, yeah.
Well, I thought we did with-
And they're talk, they were talking of doing rural through proof, because like, we might help our, our contract stuff, most of the time.
I said, "The need for this agreement was brought to our attention by local emergency management directors because there are no provisions for federal reimbursement for mutual aid during a federally declared disaster when there is no formal written agreement." So really, this might be just making a formal written agreement about, cause, cause you're not obligated to- So it goes on to say that if you sign this agreement, it doesn't mean that you have to provide the aid, you still get to, whatever the incident is, to decide. So recently, well, wasn't that, when Dorset got hit so hard before, we offered them aid. Um, but we had a choice, and we decided that we would send our trucks and offer aid. Um, so it's not like you're, it's not like we're obligated that we have to send our trucks. We still have all the same choices, but since we have an agreement in place, we could get reimbursed through FEMA as opposed to, whereas now we can't. Is that your understanding, Charlie?
We're not wanting to be discredited.
Yeah, that, that's what it seems to say in here. But we have until March first, so I would say that um, for people to read it over if it's in their packets. And if we have any questions, we can reach out to the planning commission. Um, this letter came from Ed Bowe, so we could reach out to him, you know, if we do. Um, and uh, and then the other thing is um, um, so is Tom Johnston our emergency management person? So, um, so it also probably would be just a double check with Tom and make sure he's comfortable with it. And then I would think we'd wanna sign it, but, what do you think?
I think it would be beneficial for us to sign it, just because if we run into-
Reimbursed.
Well, to get reimbursed or it would- It would get more people willing to come help, cause if Pollak could get paid to come help us, if they're not in trouble, they might be willing to come here.
Right.
And it doesn't cost them.
Right.
So there are some, um, if, if, and we can go ahead and just approve this if we want. Um, it's uh, I haven't had a chance to read through it in, in detail. And I don't think anybody else has, right?
Not in detail, I skimmed through it.
Well, we can know what the written means.
Approve and execute it at blank, Vermont this day of blank, so for the constituency, so we would, we would approve and execute it and sign if we did. And then it looks like they're asking for some information. Um, to be completed by requesting official, not quoting, requesting municipality, and oh, so this is if you have a, describe the nature and disaster, the emergency damages needed, briefly describe the infrastructure impacted, specific assistance needed, so that's if you're requesting assistance. Then there's one um, designated officials form, so aiding official contact information and alternate aiding official. So if, I guess if there was an incident, we'd have an aiding official, makes sense. Um, designated officials for the town of Dambie requesting official contact information and alternate requesting official contact. Yeah, so, um, and then NIMS type public works resources by town, so they're just saying what resources different towns have. So this is also allowing for, you know, the sharing of resources from, you know, graders and road sweepers and trucks and sewer flushes and- So in other words, if we had a disaster, we'd have that equipment, we'd need you, it says where we could find that equipment. So do we want to go ahead and um, and sign it?
Let's wait till next meeting and go, so we can all review it a little better.
Yeah.
Because we don't have to that, we say for much-
No, we have, and we, and we have a meeting in February, so we'll have it done.
We'll have it done, so that'll give a rude change of-
All right, so be sure if, I think Janice sent this out to all of us, but if for any reason she didn't, make sure that you get a copy from. Um, all right, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna um, review and, and um, discuss the signing at the next meeting. Um, so, any other business to come before our group?
I just have one quick request. As you know, when we did this renovation, we made a great effort to declutter. And we still have three boxes of VHS tapes that were made of select board meetings by Mr. Gordon. And um, they're in storage down at Nichols' store right now, which Pam's anxious to get, you know, her store back. And um, to the best of my knowledge, nobody ever viewed them. And you know, VHS is really, I don't know, who has a VHS player even anymore, maybe a few people do. But I don't particularly see a reason to save them, because everything's in the minute books and whatnot, but um, I thought direction was still a little bit.
There you go, no problem with it.
Getting it over.
But what good are they in?
Well, so, so a lot of those tapes were during the time when there was a lot of contention because of O'Meara.
Oh.
And Victor would come to every meeting, and at every meeting, he would ask the select board for the record, the state, whether there'd been any contact from O'Meara. Um, and I don't know for sure that those conversations are in the minutes, but I'm also not sure, um, and, and there were a lot of conversations then, I mean, they are taped.
That are valuable, and some of them ain't.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to know, and then if Brad makes a point, I mean, nobody can really see them. I'm wondering, I wonder, so that was, Victor did that, cause that was kind of his business that he, that he did. I wonder if Victor ever changed things over for me, I wonder if they could get digitized and, um, I don't know that it's necessary.
You can come on and see it.
Depends.
Yeah.
For what, for what reason? Yeah, all of your minutes are in the minute books and the vault, and it's uh-
Do we have storage anyplace else that we-
Well, I mean, they can go up in the attic, but here we go, just putting stuff up in the attic again, you know, and I-
And they'll be there a hundred years from now, and they'll be able to use them.
And, you know, these little plastic things.
Yes, that's why, if they're not readable-
Twenty-year-olds that don't know how a rotary phone works.
Shit, in twenty years, everyone, everybody's looking back and say, what in the hell?
That's what I'm saying, a bunch of farmers.
How, how soon does Pam want them out of there? Do we have a week?
Oh, yeah.
So let me, I, I would like to, if you don't mind, just to, to, to check in with a few people, just to make sure that, you know, that there isn't anything that they feel is really important, cause minutes don't capture the same thing in terms of conversations. And, and so they are a resource, so before we trash them, let's do that. And then also, I, it might be worth just asking Victor-
Put it in the attic.
Well, we could, but I agree, it's, it's clutter. If, if they're really not useful, then I think we should-
We got room in the basement.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good place down there for them.
Yeah, actually, it's very dry, they'd still be there, yeah. Well, yeah, give me, give me a week to, to just, let's not, let's not decide right away to just trash them, let me just reach out to-
Some people might find them really interesting and other people just-
Well, it's not a question whether they'd be interesting, it's whether there's anything there on the public record that could be important. Cause that was during a time when-
Things were important.
Yeah, and, 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 yeah.
There were a lot of important decisions made back then.
There were a lot of important decisions.
But those are all recorded in the minute books.
Well, that's, I'm not, that's what I kinda wanted to check on.
VHS tapes also disintegrate and whatnot, I mean, I don't even know.
Yeah, yeah, just, I-
It's like work.
Well, if we can hold off on a week, let me just talk to a few folks that were really instrumental in making all that happen and, and see, including Victor. I thought I'd just give Victor a call too. Who knows, maybe he'd say, it'll be back to me, maybe he wants them, maybe he'd say, give them back to me and, and he'd digitize them for us and then, you know.
Maybe he will, maybe he will.
Somebody wants them. I just don't wanna be firing stuff up again.
Yeah, okay, now, yeah, I don't like clutter for either thing. Um, uh, let's see, we, we're welcoming public comment-
One more other business.
Oh, we got one more other business, okay, and when I have something too.
If we're gonna do anything as far as a tractor mower, if we're looking at new, I think we should uh, be getting quotes and ordering it soon. Because if we don't, we could run into the issue of not having it.
Um-
Well, to get it set up, to get it here, cause if you wait until May, and you, you order a mower, they may say, well, it's gonna be two months before we get a mower built.
And it doesn't go to a budget issue, because this is why we have a equipment reserve fund. So, we, we have the ability to do it if we decide we, you know, we should do that.
Yeah, I kinda dropped the ball on my part, checking in with uh, Salem over there and Tim. You know, just see if they got anything available, what they got available.
Jack's getting me a quote anyhow. Cause I have talked to Jack, and he was gonna get me a quote on a tractor and a mower-
Yep.
-with a loader. And Charlie had got a quote from whoever we gave it to Lynn. The last meeting, I gave you the quote from-
He did, he gave you the quote, yeah.
Are we doing over the rail more?
That's what I-
I recommend doing that.
That's what you got for a price, and that's what I've asked Jack for, a price isn't over the rail. But I've also asked that-
Do you need to do the banks?
I'd really like to see that.
And I've asked Jack to quote it with a loader on it. Cause I think it would be beneficial if we had the loader.
Yeah, we need a, definitely need a loader.
So, we'll look to have you all bring some quotes to the next meeting?
Well, we'll have to have, you've got the one, and we need, we need to have two more.
Yeah.
What's the one you got, one more?
I'm-
It was a John Deere tractor, and I don't remember the mower.
Do you remember how I got, did you hand it to me?
I handed it to you right here. Paul wasn't here at that meeting, cause I was sitting here.
Yeah. I might have left it in the packet for Janice, so I-
That's when you were made.
Yeah. Let me, and I might be in, in my notebook at home, I'll, I'll take a look, okay.
I did, I did check with um, Tim over there on a, a hundred horse Kubota, the M series. And I didn't get into the, don't shake your head, you're all John Deere.
If it was up to me and we didn't have to get a quote, it'd be a red tractor today.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a John Deere that they quoted us on, it wouldn't be a Kubota.
Yep.
Cause Jack told me, I don't know, six years ago, when we, Hareman was pushing me to get a Kubota with a bucket, Jack said that front end will never hold up for you. And going on that, I- I, I just don't like the idea of the, the front ends on those, because he said it wouldn't hold up for loader work.
Well, I've had one for forty years, so.
You don't use tractors like uh, most people do.
Well, I don't abuse them.
Well, it's not abuse when you're putting a thousand hours a year on it, packing bunk and filling mixture wagon. We might not use it that hard here on, for the town, cause, you know, you'd be loading trucks or doing some stuff, you won't be using it as much as I do, but I would rather go with a better front end than Kubota's got.
We'll find out.
Well, we'll get quotes and take a look, and all right, so we'll, we'll do that. Um, I had something else to wait, um, oh, it was the Parker Road thing. So Charlie, we were going to discuss this RFP on Parker Road, but that's now totally off the table?
We, yeah, but once Greg gets all situated, we're gonna have to have a special meeting.
Okay, so this, what this has to do, just to prepare people for a special meeting, has to do with the dry hydrant replacing over, um, that got washed out right next to Parker Road. And, and it appears now like we may actually, as the dry hydrant's being done, there may be enough money to also um, pay for the relocation of the material that was used on the temporary bridge. Whereas before, remember in December I came and said that the Army Corps of Engineers was, made it very clear that that's not part of FEMA and that that would be on our dime. Um, so we're hoping to find a way to get that work covered, but we're not positive yet, right Charlie? So, to be continued.
Material, what we don't use on our dimes is to be stockpiled on the town property because it belongs to the town, for the annual budget.
Right. And, and the plan was that that would be in part of this RFP, that somebody would do it, and that this, we, we would have um, grant monies to cover um, the majority of this. But now Greg has asked us to rework this again, right?
He's prepared to work on it.
Yeah, so, so this is obsolete, and we, we might have to have a special meeting in the next couple of weeks, because this has to be part of the, our resubmital of the re-scope work for the whole Parker Bridge thing, and we've got a time deadline hoping with FEMA. So if we need a meeting, we'll just have to do a quick, quick meeting.
So where we just stockpiled up in Harrington Field?
Yeah, unused material at site, just stockpiled for town at Dambie, approximately two miles from the Parker Road Bridge. Specifications are enclosed, and there were all the specifications and everything else. And then there was also, we had drafted up an ad for the newspaper, the request for bids, but now that's all on hold. So I, what we hoped is that we would be voting tonight, so that that could go out, um, but we're just gonna, we might have to have a town, uh- We might have to have a town vote meeting. Apologies, but might need to wait.
So... Are you done with that?
Done with that. You know what we never did is approve our minutes from the last meeting.
Now, I have a question. My mind was just jogged when you said about stockpiling. At the... Where Short Cut Road takes off from Danby Pollak Road, stockpile material there. Is that town property or not?
No, it's houses.
I don't think it was.
It's houses.
That's what the tax map shows. And Lynn has said that there's been a dumping issue there.
Oh, it's on Short Cut Road, yeah. Right above Short Cut, right where the waterfall is. Yeah, people are dumping garbage. It's horrible.
So I'm kind of wondering if there's some material that's going around, if maybe a burn could be built there, because...
What happens if you get a parastion truck and you can't go nowhere? You only... Well...
Well, I'm not saying that, you know, it has to be right at the very edge of the road.
All put it on the bank, you got to...
But just so that people couldn't be throwing stuff over the bank, because...
Well, they can still throw the... So what I saw last time were just bags of garbage that were thrown over, but I've also seen where people have backed up and dumped on a construction debris.
We did that upon middle of our...
Right.
That's what you're asking.
Did it work?
No.
No.
No, you stop, you see a lot of garbage that's thrown over the side.
No.
Only thing that works, catch them, put them... You stop.
Well, we could... We could put a gate camera there.
And they'd see a lot.
Can they...
I think years ago, we had a...
Stop it.
That's the dump that I think Stevie was the one that dumped it, buried beside the road.
Oh, I did on Upper Road. I found the door to a tire van right down here. The road was missing, and the cop says they can't do nothing. I'm like, well, the door didn't lock up either, and throw itself over the bank and everything. So it's still in there, still there. Slubs are gonna be slubs.
Quick, couple of other pieces of business we need to approve. It wasn't on our agenda, I'm not sure why, but we need to approve our minutes from December 12th. So if people had a chance to read the minutes from December 12th, I'd contain a motion to approve minutes.
I may approve them. All right, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we have one other thing. Certificate of Highway Mileage is in here. It's not in the agenda, but it clears that it's that time again. So it's been filled out with class one, two, and three, and the number of the roads. I seem to remember that we did this last year. Short Cut Road was an issue. So where do we stand on that? If discontinued, please attach signed copy proceedings. I was supposed to talk to John Thrasher about what we have to do to discontinue that road, and I did put in a call, but I have not had a call back. I think it must have gotten lost in the shuffle, because he's usually very good about calls, but...
Well, that and Town Highway 7.
And Town Highway 7, right. So... And Town Highway 7, I don't think is in here. I don't know. It'd be interesting to see if it is.
Well, she must have got her information.
Well, she got it off that map, but there are trees in the middle of Town Highway 7, so I don't know. I don't know. Do you know, Charlie, where we come up with these numbers? Is it from that class map?
Yeah.
So if that showed Town Highway 7 as a class three road, it would be included in here?
I think it is. I don't know that.
Hmm. Who filled this out? Who gets the... Who does the numbers? We just get it with the numbers on it? Interesting.
Apparently, I don't know.
It's probably what's been reported for years and hasn't changed.
Well, I think we ought to get on the ball and get that Short Cut Road thrilled up before.
Yeah.
We ended up tilting a lot of money in that thing for nothing.
Well, it looks like...
It's all shot.
Please attach signed copies. So if we discontinue them, we have to attach signed copies of the proceedings, the minutes of the meeting.
The sooner the better.
If we reclassify them, we have to sign copies. And so I think it...
All right.
The question is whether we can put it into the temporary bayou for another year. I do wish I saw these things before we had the meeting. All right, Vermont Agency Transit Guidelines.
After budget.
Yeah.
Documentation is established, you know.
Big time.
So do we sign as is? The truth is, for Short Cut Road, I remember I calculated at one point how much we lost in state aid for that, and it was like pennies.
Yeah, peanuts, peanuts.
It was not even... I mean, it's not even worth worrying about, because we have to write a check for, you know, fifty bucks. It's not...
Cost to maintain it, keep that road up, and it's...
Yeah, that's...
Nothing. That's stupid.
Requires...
Did Josh ever get hold of you guys for recommendations on that, though? He did recommend it, right?
Yeah, I know he did.
Yeah. Yeah, because I tell you, it's undermining.
Right.
And we get tons of money in that road to fix it.
Yeah, and it's cornered into the Brook.
Yeah.
So Pollak's hollering already that all of our stuff's down in that building, so...
Well, gee, that'd be a good place to stockpile all that stuff and burn it.
There you go. And you only got a mile to drive.
Yeah, the back domes, almost where it's really bad, you just start...
Well, and we should consider, you know, really blocking it, so it doesn't become a tractor use, and people are dunking cottages and whatnot.
So this has to be mailed before February 20th.
Good number.
And an oath that states that the mileage of highways according to Vermont statutes annotated Title 19, Section 305 is as follows.
You can't change it till you throw it off, or do it legally, or...
Well, yeah, and so they do, they have a whole list of things, and if we were to do that, then what documentation is needed to change it? I'm not... In my quick look through here, I'm not seeing something that says... "Assistant Municipalities ensure the changes submitted of the mileage certificates are processed completely without delay. The statutory definitions are processed, blah, blah, blah. Each year, the Highway Transportation Mapping Section processes the Certificate of Highway Mileage for each municipality and compiles the total of the state highway." So they're the ones, I guess, that put these numbers on here and legal trails into a summary. "The highway mileage information is used in the formula for the appropriation of state aid." That's why it's important. "The Certificate of Highway Mileage and supporting documentation of changes also provides the Vtrans mapping section, which informs information to make the necessary changes to the general highway maps, also referred to as the town highway maps. Annually, on or before February 10th, the Select Board shall file with the town clerk a sworn statement of the description and measurements of all Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 highways and trails then in existence, including any specific designations such as throwaway rescenic highway..." Throughway, I'm sorry. Throughway, rescenic highway. "When classes 1, 2, 3, or 4 town highways, trails, or unidentified corridors are accepted, discontinued, or reclassified, a copy of the proceeding shall be filed." So I think at this point, we haven't discontinued or reclassified them, so we don't have any copies of proceedings. So I think we sign as is, and then we go ahead and do that and file those when it happens. If that makes sense? So if there are no changes in mileage, check box and sign below. So we'll do that. And it looks like they're looking for all of us. So we pass it around, and then Janice will also have to sign. And let me just make sure there's no... Here. I'll pass that around for people to sign, and I'll be looking to see if there's any place else we have to sign. I checked the box of the... That's what we will use if we make changes. Certificate of Completion Opening of a Highway for Public Property, that would be if we did anything, so... When it comes back, we'll stick it on top of that. All right. Um, let's see if there's anything else in here. There were a couple of notices, both Challenge Voter Response Forms. I'm not sure it's anything that the Board of Municipal Authority would... But it looks like it's folks that move.
I stepped underneath it.
So I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold a second.
Yay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.